Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for November 27th, 2018. First is a salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of the last meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. There are some edits that I put on the desk.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Moving seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Department heads and committee chair updates. Do we have any? Going once, going twice. Okay, old business. ACO position.
So, I'm gonna start re-advertising it. I'll start that tomorrow. I did get one resume late last night.
Nice.
So, that's good. So, we'll get it going and hopefully get some names to put before you soon.
Yep. And on that, I'd like to thank the public for increasing the salary on that at the special town meeting last night, so I feel that'll definitely help. So, the dozer, I have not had a chance to follow up on, so we'll move beyond that one. Security at the San Salt Building.
So, this came up a couple of weeks ago. The board asked me to look into it a little bit. We had talked about the District Two Road Commissioner, and we're still kind of, I think when we talked about it last, we didn't realize that Mr. Lerturno was gonna want to wait until December 1st, so I didn't bother reaching out to Langley about it where it's gonna be kinda done, and Joe's still kinda getting his feet wet setting everything up, so I haven't talked to him. I did speak to District One, and he feels like there wasn't any issue down there at all. He said that the only time it's left open is when he or his crew was kinda in and out during a storm, but he doesn't see the need for you to do anything differently. But certainly whatever direction you, you know, you give me, I can reach out to someone on the other side.
I think when Joe starts, we'll sit down with him as well and see how he feels about it, but in the meantime, I think we should have some no trespassing signs there to keep the public out.
And Scott did mention maybe an authorized personnel-only sign-
Okay.
-inside the building somewhere near, but he didn't think that there had been any issues there, and he wondered if there was something maybe that we hadn't shared with him.
I feel like somebody mentioned in the last Townsmen, not the one we just got today, there was an article about a boy that did-
Oh, that's right.
-die in a pile of sand.
Got buried, yeah.
So...
And is the building, is the building locked itself? I know there's a gate at the door, and that's what he talked about being open and closed, but is, even if that's open, is the sand building locked?
I've seen it open before.
Yeah. I think if they're coming and going, they probably leave it open.
So, do an authorized personnel-only sign. Look around, maybe two, depending on how many, there must be at least, what, two entrances in there?
There's a little door and a big door.
I think they're probably, yeah.
Well, one gate in, but the actual building, so it wouldn't hurt to have a couple up.
Yeah, put them on the gate and put them on the building as well.
Yep.
All right. Anything else on that, or am I taking it off the agenda afterwards?
Take it off.
You wanna take it off?
Um...
We're gonna talk to Joe anyway about that.
Yeah, we're gonna talk to Joe. I'll take it off.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on that? Lebanon Road, Acton side.
So, I know we had a conversation about this at the November 13th meeting, and had a little bit of miscommunication. Mr. Langley had actually stepped out, I think, to talk to Mr. Lerturno when I kinda updated you guys that I had reached out to the Southern Road Commissioner, that we, Southern Plower in Chapley, to see if we could work out some sort of agreement about him doing that little piece. And as much as he would possibly be interested in helping, changed hats, reviewed the contract with, that the Town of Chapley has with this contractor, and the contract is very clear that he is not allowed to pick up any additional work, jobs, projects, until all Chapley roads are plowed and sanded and maintained. So, it's not something, until the three-year contract is up with this individual, you know, Acton would have to reach out to the Chapley Selectmen and see if they'd be interested in, you know, rewording the contract and coming up with some sort of agreement, but for now, it's a legal contract. They've got one more full year.
One more year. Okay.
Is it something that Sanford could pick up?
Yeah, could we check with Sanford on that, because they have the other end.
Or is it Lebanon?
No, Sanford has one end and Chapley has the other, so that would be Pete Smith. As a matter of fact, that might be Dave Winchell on that side. So, it might be worth checking into, 'cause it's three miles over, three miles back. That's a lot of time, you know, for us, so if we could possibly pass it off, we'd be better off.
I can ask Sanford.
Okay.
And just so I'm clear, so when you, when you turn at the fork, you're turning into Chapley. When you turn at the fork by the store, that's Chapley. When it, well, when you turn, when the road forks, they say to the right-
Yep.
-that's Chapley. Chapley Plow is about a mile down before the town road, so it turns to Acton for additionally another mile, and then it turns to Sanford?
Actually, it turns to, is Sanford, and then is it Lebanon?
And then Lebanon, okay.
Then Lebanon, yeah.
Sanford and then Lebanon, okay. So, we'll reach out to Sanford first and then Lebanon.
There's no other paths in there that Acton plows? It's just that one little stretch?
Just that little stretch.
Okay.
This title's private.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Is there any chance that if we were to meet with the Chapley Board, that they could do an addendum to the contract?
I, I mean, I can't-
Not so much for this year, maybe, but maybe for next year.
Right. I mean, I can't speak on behalf of the other two Selectmen in Chapley. I don't know what they would say, but-
I mean, I don't know how tight that contract is, whether there's any room for-
Well, I know, we certainly, I mean, we make amendments, you know, and addendums based on things that are going on, but I guess if I, if I switch roles and I think about it as a Chapley taxpayer and a Chapley Selectman, you know, we're plowing a mile in, and then they need to turn up. They've got a large area down there. I mean, it's gonna be another mile out of their way-
Right.
-really is taking away from the Chapley, Chapley piece of it, so, I mean, I don't know what the other two Selectmen would say. Certainly, I can bring it up at a couple of meetings, but then the whole thing of material comes into it, too.
Right.
There's no way to gauge how much sand Chapley would be using on that Acton mile.
Right. I mean, there is, but yeah, it's, it's not an exact science, so, okay.
But I'll ask them.
Okay. Good. Okay. Outstanding District Two equipment.
It feels like it's been so long since we met. I'm trying to remember.
I know.
At the November 13th meeting, there was a piece of equipment that we talked about that used to, yeah, it used to smooth over the roads or something. I did speak to Mr. Winchell right after that meeting.
Oh, it was a York rake?
York rake.
For a pickup.
So, he did tell me that that hadn't been used by the town in many years. He did tell me that it was at a particular location and that he would work on getting it to the sand and salt shed.
Okay.
Since then, we've had a few storms on the holiday. I haven't followed up with him, but we get two clear days in a row, I'll give him a call. As far as I know, that's the only piece of equipment. There's nothing else that I'm asking for.
I think there's a thermometer for the roads.
A temperature gun.
Temperature gun.
I never knew we owned such a thing as that rake, so, I knew we owned a couple of Sanders, but, okay.
So, I'm to ask, I'm looking for a temperature gun as well.
So, we own temperature guns?
Yeah, those are a hundred dollar, I think, a hundred dollar item or whatever.
Okay.
Anything else, and I don't wanna, I'd like to get this done. Anybody know of anything else?
Dennis, anything else you can think of, Dennis?
I was just thinking about the road signs and cones and things like that. You'd have to look through the...
I thought he said he put those down there, but I'm not positive.
There's some down there, but...
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
You'd have to look through the inventory.
Sure.
Okay.
Can you come with the T-6 dozer?
We did.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have any update on it, so.
All right.
Yep. Okay, new business. Purchase orders. In light of what was recently happened, this is one of my brilliant ideas. I don't know how brilliant it is, but we'll see. I know a few years ago, back in eight, 2011, 2010, and prior, we used some purchase orders. Thinking about going back towards that, if, if we think we might wanna do it. I have some exhibit A's here that I'll give you folks. There's two, there's two things in there. One that we'll go over in a few. That's the second item on the list there.
All right.
There is a set for, so, okay. So, purchase orders. Spoke a little bit about it last night at the special town meeting, but I feel it might, it might help straighten out some of the issues we have and kinda the way we're doing things. As it sits right now, when we sit down and we do the, the-
Budget.
Budget, well, we sign the-
Warrants.
We sign the warrants.
Warrants.
We're signing it post-work. The work's been done. We're going through, we're approving, you know, we're signing off on it, and the checks are going out. We all have a rough idea what's being spent and what's going on, but take a big project like, like the Flat Ground Road project. Michelle does a great job at keeping an eye on the money, and she did. She told us that it's getting close. None of us realized that the Road Commissioner had ordered another over $6,000 worth of gravel to go down there. If we had the purchase orders, he would've had to come to us and say during the whole project at different times, "Okay, I got three culverts I need to replace down there." We would've sat down and said, "Okay, how much is a culvert? You know, I'm just picking numbers, so these aren't right. $200, and I need three of them." So, there's $600, okay? We would've sit, you know, the way this purchase order would work, if we were using the exhibit we have in front of us, which I got from another town, you'd put in the account code, which, to back up a little bit, will go along with hopefully how the new budget system will work, where they'll actually have, I hate to call it a line item budget, but they'll have a line budget with, you know, the, each Road Commissioner will sit down and have to do a detailed budget, like, I mean, every department does that we have here. That's the only department that doesn't do a detailed budget. The Fire Department does, Jennifer does.
I mean, General Government does. municipal, I mean, we break down all the way to postage, supplies, I mean, it's not hard to do.
Right, I mean, yeah, right down to postage, you know, how many stamps you're gonna buy. The transfer station does, yeah, every, every department we have does.
School does.
But, yeah, the school does. I mean, the school does a very in-depth one.
This would be a better bookkeeping system, too, as far as like with the road system that we purchased, too. I mean, because we're going to know, I mean, and, you know, whether we approve it or not, but I'm just saying, you know, we have, we know exactly, not just kind of a rounded figure, but we're gonna know, we hope, you know, if, you know-
I would think so, because, so he comes to us and says he needs three culverts, we do a purchase order for three culverts. He gets down there and finds, "I need to do three more," he's gonna come back to us. It's just not, it's not a blank check anymore. I can't say, I can't see where we would refuse to give a purchase order unless he's getting close, you know, a project is getting close on money if it's a warrant-articled money project, or we just don't see the need, you know, which I don't see that happening, but I think we're gonna hear from the other side.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, looking at it from an employee stance, I mean, I, I don't disagree with the purchase order, I just, for those of us, 95% of the town that's doing line items, you know, when I need a printer for my office, or I need more motor vehicle forms, I mean, or I wanna send somebody to training, there's a line that says, you know, "Town Clerk Training, Town Clerk Supplies," and Michelle is not gonna pay anything out of those lines that don't qualify within them. This is gonna put a lot more work on the departments that all have line items. My other, you know, can you not create a policy forcing that department into a line item? I mean, you know, effective, effective January 1st.
Well, I think-
Effective January 1st, all projects must be pre-approved. I mean, you have the control being, you know, we know with the purse and the money, and make them itemized and list it out in advance, I mean-
That's what I would like to do.
Because I guess here's my thing, and I hate to say this on TV, but what's gonna happen when they don't get purchase orders? What are you gonna do?
True.
They could just go ahead and-
I mean, they're, you know, I mean, it's gonna happen there, you know what I mean? And I'm not talking about the road, guys, I'll pick on the Fire Department or pick on-
Yeah, 'cause this is gonna be town-wide. This isn't just for roads. This is gonna be for the department.
Right, we can't not pay the bill.
But, right, right. That would be a discipline, everything between, between us and the employee.
You can't discipline elected officials.
You've only got a couple.
I'm just, I know, but I'm just saying, if you're gearing this towards one department, and they're, they're elected, you know, that's, that's my concern. I mean, it's, you know, it's, I mean, it's definitely, it would've prevented the last situation, you're right, but-
And we'll put, we could put a dollar amount on it, so it's not for every, we're not gonna nickel and dime. We could put a $500.
So, for example, so the ambulance that was in that accident, or the fire truck that was in the accident-
Mm-hmm. The ambulance.
Ambulance. So, they went down, they got a quote-
Right.
-so they need to come back and file a purchase order to get that repaired.
Most likely.
I just-
If we look at it like that. I mean, but in which case? We sit down, we have an estimate? There's the estimate, there's, here we go, all done.
I just wanna make sure that we're treating-
I guess it would work, if we could create a policy, like you said, no projects until you give us a breakdown, like Dave Langley verbalized last night, I'm sure he could put it on paper, no projects until you give us something like that, or what they, the warrant finance amended last night, specifics. But if something comes out of that same project that's not listed, and they're gonna need more, then they would fill out-
A purchase order.
The purchase order, so that it could then be approved. We wanna know why it's costing more, why you didn't figure it in the first time around. So, we, we would know ahead of time before they overspent on the project.
Or a purchase order could say $20,000. Description of work, repair on Flat Ground Road, per warrant article, blah, blah, blah.
And would, but would that be enough, or would you wanna, I mean, with the purchase order, does a purchase order need to be broken down? I mean, $20,000-
The idea is it should be broken down. They should be coming to us, or they should be submitting a purchase order to avoid going over budget.
Right. I just, I mean, I just wanna make sure that-
For instance, you need a, you need a printer, how much is a printer?
I mean, I, the motor vehicle printer's almost $500.
Yeah, almost.
So, 510, let's say, for the sake of conversation.
Five-ten, so if it's, if it's over 500, and we set 500, you'd have to come in with a purchase order.
Right.
If we make it 750.
Right. No, and I don't mind the purchase order, I mean, I have nothing-
Buy your printer.
Right. I just wanna make sure that if it's something you put into place, that we're gonna, you know, when I go, when I change, change hats from the department head to the town administrator, everybody has to follow it, and everybody has to follow it the same way.
Right.
And purchase orders, you know, will only need, will have to have deadlines on them, and they'll have to only be approved at Selectman meetings.
That's it. Yeah, they have to be approved here on Tuesday night, so if they could come to us that Tuesday night, Tuesday night, and submit a purchase order to us-
Yep.
-at that time, which means that we'd have to have every Tuesday night a standing list, a standing order of where our budget sets, which is not a bad thing either.
Right. No, and Michelle could easily do that on Mondays.
Say, "Well, a man needs a tire for the skids to ya." You know, we know that's gonna be over, over 500 bucks probably, so we just have to submit a purchase order.
Can we make a couple of, can we make this like trio-friendly? Can we make a couple of changes?
Do whatever you want to it. That was just, just something to go by.
Present another one.
We may even have one already in the system, I don't know.
So, what amount is the board looking for? Are you comfortable with 500?
I'm comfortable with five, I'm comfortable with 750. I mean, I, like I said, I'm not looking to tie hands, but-
I still would like to make a decision on line item budgeting, too.
There's a very, very few items that anybody's gonna purchase over $500 on a regular basis.
Right.
I mean, you know what I mean, it just doesn't happen.
Right. I mean, you had, I think, you had ordered something this week, but it had to do with your normal activity. It was some, I don't remember what it was.
I ordered something?
I thought I saw that on the budget, but on the thing, I can't remember what it was. I don't know whether it was forms, I don't remember whether-
Might've been Michelle. Was it high grade? She had to order her 10, her W-2s and 1099s, maybe.
Maybe, that wouldn't have probably have been over 500, though. Anyway, so, yeah. I mean, for instance, I looked at the Fire Department, for instance, there was nothing on their sheet this week that went over it. I think there was one for 400 and something, and that was supplies for the ambulance, so.
And is it, it's gonna be a combined total, so when you say supplies for the ambulance, it's a combined total to one vendor of more than $500?
One vendor. For one vendor.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, if you're gonna go buy helmets and gloves, you're not breaking out one, you know, helmets is one and gloves is another. It's one vendor. And it's not gonna pertain to electric bills, telephone bills, things of that nature, which is an ongoing-
And those aren't gonna be over that amount anyways, but-
Yeah.
But it's, I mean, as far as the line item, too, back to what Kim was saying, I mean, you can put a policy in place and send a memo to all of us as department heads anytime saying, you know, "Effective this date, this is how we're gonna do it before funds will be released."
I would like to do that as of January 1st. I don't know.
I do, too.
Just, I just think that-
That should give a department head, I mean-
You know, then we know, we, we know what they're gonna be doing. These are our projects, I mean-
Well, it should be fairly simple for one of the Road Commissioners just coming into it, because we can start him and train him, go right into that. Do you know what I mean? We can, you know, even if we start him December 1st, I mean, this is, you know-
Right, this is how we're gonna do it.
We can start that from the beginning, so I don't, you know, I think on that side it's gonna be simple, 'cause it'll be the only way he's taught.
Right. The only problem is he doesn't know what he's got for projects.
Right, right.
So, you know, what's he gonna-
He's gonna have to drive around, check it out. I mean, we probably have some projects waiting to get started on anyhow, so.
About six months, too, so for that, hopefully, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think District One is capable of doing it.
Oh, absolutely.
I've seen him do it for the Flat Ground.
Yeah, you know, he did what he needed, you know, last year.
Yep.
If I may, I wanted to tell you that my experience with the purchase order, I did this for 13 years at the school, and we had, you know, for a $500,000 budget for the maintenance department, and one thing Ron Smith would love, the fact that you changed over to complete purchase orders. When you do this, when the new budget comes, you sit down as a department head, and you write out requests for purchase orders, say for some, say for supplies, say if I was getting it from three different companies, and I knew last year about what I spent, obviously, 'cause I did the budget, at these companies, so you'd have three purchase orders, one for each vendor. And within that, say if it's gonna be, you know, $2,000, that's what the purchase order would be for, and as a department head, it's your responsibility to make sure that, you know, you can cover whatever you need with that $2,000, and then if something comes up and you can't, then you go back to the one in charge via the superintendent or the Selectman and say, "I need another $500. Prices went up this year more than I thought, and blah, 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 and you need that to finish the year." Also, my experience is that at the school, that there is no, there's no limit. You had a purchase order for everything, and, and how they do that is, and I'll use the town clerk as an example, when they have voting and different things, you know, she buys coffee and donuts or whatever, and she knows about how much a year she spends on that, so in the beginning of the year, she'd write out a purchase order for $100 or $10,000, whatever it is, and that covers it. So, you have know that a department, and I'm not criticizing anybody, but every department in the school runs their departments this way, and once you get it established, it's, it's very easy, you know, you put the responsibility on the department heads, which you do anyway, it's just accountability.
The school has a good system, just by sitting through it last year.
And, and I'm sure the purchasing policy, which would cover the, you know, purchase orders, would be a good one to look at, and myself, for the 13 years I did it, the only thing I ever paid for out of cash that wasn't covered under purchase orders, when I got a permit by rule to put the playground in, when Jim Driscoll and I went in and got a permit, and then I got reimbursed for it. That's my experience, and it's very clean, and these departments, and I know they do, like with the town clerk, or the treasurer, or the Fire Department, they know what their budgets are.
Right.
They know how they come up with their numbers.
Right.
And the beginning of the year, you do all your purchase orders.
But that kinda defeats the purpose of the purchase orders.
No, why is that?
Well, they're just basically going off their budget. This way, it gives a second set of eyes and a second authorization.
But the purchase orders, the purchase orders will have a description of what you want.
Right.
You know, you know what I mean? Like, if I did, like I said, about supplies, I would have to give the superintendent, "These are the supplies I'm planning on buying for the year."
Yep.
And so, he would know what I was buying with that purchase order, you know, and this is, you guys would know everything.
Yeah, but I'm just meaning ongoing throughout the year, there's gonna be things that you're gonna have to buy that-
So, I think what he's saying is that, let's just say for the sake of conversation, so if I have a $500 supply list under my town clerk budget, $500, I think is what it is, at the beginning of the year, you would want me to put in a $500 supply list, run it through the system as an encumbering expense, and each time we purchase something, it would come before you, and you'd see the subtraction off of the 500.
Right, it's all encumbered.
So, pens, papers, comes, you'll see the $500.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think we need to break it down that tight, and that would be-
But that's what he's, that's what I'm mentioning.
But you are breaking it down, because when, like Jen orders stuff from Staples, for example, that is breaking it all down, and you'd have a purchase order for Staples. And the vendors that she would use throughout the year, she would have these purchase orders for these different vendors she uses, and if there's an unexpected one, then you do a new one. But in the 13 years that I, that I worked at the school, everything was under purchase order, every little thing. We had a, we had a purchase order for boonies, we had a per, for Emery Mills hardware, for Springerville hardware, for Shaw's equipment, I mean, for everything that anybody did. And it's a good thing to do, and I maybe I'm-
No, it's good. So, it's all good information.
Still got some work to do, that's all.
Maybe I'll talk with Andy next week.
Okay.
You know, 'cause he, you know, has a really tight project.
So, I'll go over with Michelle and kinda just see how she, what she thinks and how we would tweak it.
Sure.
So, you're thinking 500, is that what I'm hearing?
It's just a number that I-
And will you entertain some type of line item policy?
Definitely.
Because, I mean, I just, this kind of is a redundant, you know what I mean? So, 'cause what Dennis is saying is kinda true. I mean, I'm gonna put a $500 one in for the supplies, but if you go to my supplies account, you could see the Staples, the Walmart, you know what I mean? That is the purchase order there, so.
Right, I'm, I'm not concerned with the, with the smaller dollar amounts. You know, you're gonna, you're gonna spend $100 here, $100 there. You know, to me, those items wouldn't need a purchase order, 'cause you have that in your, your, your supply line.
Okay.
But if you have a large dollar purchase, you need a computer, for instance, that's when you'd come in with a purchase order and say, "I, you know, I've gotta replace this computer, this one, this one died." And it's, you know, $2,300. So, we'd authorize a $2,300 purchase, as long as it was in the line or, or some way, where we could come up with where the, where the money's coming from.
You can also just put a flat policy in place townwide, that any expenditure over X amount must be pre-approved by the board of Selectmen at a public meeting, so it doesn't have to be even a purchase order. So, when I need that $2,300 computer, I can't just order and wait for the bill to come in, you know what I mean? We'd tell the department heads that it's, you know, that we've got a place for you on the agenda every single week, anything over X amount.
But this gives us a really good paper trail of it.
No, yeah, no, no, it certainly does.
Opposed to, you know, minutes of a meeting or a tape.
I just, I don't wanna see more work created for those people that stay within the, that do the job they're supposed to.
Yep.
Can we agree to put in place, January 1st, the line item?
Yeah, I think, I, I fully agree with that.
January 1st, you know?
I mean, like I said, there's really only one department left that doesn't do it, so, and they should know, at least, I mean-
They've got a few months to even think about.
Well, I, I mean, unless you object, I'm gonna push for December 1st on District Two, because there's no reason to let them have it one way for a month and then try to change it in January.
Other than the fact, he's gotta put something together.
Well, right, but he's not gonna have, I mean, in the middle of winter, his, his only budget is gonna be plowing for the most part.
Right.
He's not gonna be working on, you know, big projects, and he's gonna communicate enough, you know, as we start those, but we can start him off that way.
We could do it December 1st.
And even with the other side, he's not gonna have any projects going on.
Right, he's got months to before, yeah.
Nothing going on, but you're gonna wanna know what's going on until, until the end of June.
Well, right, so that's, it gives him time to start putting it together.
Yeah.
People have a workshop.
So, you're not gonna, you're not actually gonna implement it, you're not gonna enact it until the, the new fiscal year, but you want them to be working on it now to get it there?
No, I, I, before any work gets done this spring, I wanna know what it's gonna cost to.
When, where, and why?
Yep, all of it.
Oh, I agree, yeah, yeah.
So, if, if they know, that means they must have some idea.
Right, I mean, before anybody starts a project on a road, I mean, they're gonna have an idea, so we're just gonna, well, let me put some stuff together for you, and I'll present it to you next week.
That's the only way I'm thinking, January 1st, it'll give them, give them a month to, to actually get something itemized in on paper.
Right. Right.
And I guess if there were any December projects, then I would, I would say you definitely, they definitely need a little time, but we're, they're not gonna be doing any road projects till spring.
Right, yeah, 'cause that.
Start day's really.
Yeah, I don't know what's gonna happen on Flat Ground. I think that's gonna be wait till spring, I think. I don't know.
Yeah, I haven't spoken to the attorney.
So.
They have a spring thaw.
Yeah, yeah, unless we have a spring thaw next week. So.
And I'll try to maybe get the gentleman in to give their inputs.
Yeah, definitely. Okay. Sounds good. So that takes care of purchase orders, and that takes care of, nope, that doesn't take care of time sheets, 'cause that was something different. So, the other thing I passed out was time sheets that Lise had put together.
Uh, I was looking at the, the two districts are using two different time sheets. Well, they're using the same, I don't know how to word, they're using the same.
Cover sheet.
Cover sheet. Actually, they're using, each employee's using the same time sheet, but the cover sheet's different. But on the time sheet, it's, it's more of a flip-flop, like, this is my hours and this is what I did, and to, to flip-flop back and forth when you've got a whole stack of them's pretty difficult, but if you would've put them side by side with the other teammates that working on the project, you can look at them side by side, so you don't miss anything. Um, it also breaks it down, this also is a little more detailed, it asks for the description of the work and the distance that they've used on the road. It asks for the, the road name, time in, time out, labor hours, equipment hours, equipment used, material and type, uh, material type and amount used, and if there's any supplies such as culverts that were, that were used. So it has it all in one sheet that you can kind, you can look at and put side by side with another employee of the same district to see who was working together and, um, if the times line, line up and if the hours match.
And you could take that, take this and also put it in the.
RSMS.
RSMS?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, I'd like to see, um, the cover sheet's similar. Right now, District One looks different than District Two. District, um, Two is two pages, District One is one page.
And this is a perfect time to, to change them, because before we're going into a District Two, we will make them the way that, I don't know if you have a preference of one versus two, if you've seen both of them, but we can sit down and go over those and.
It could be a combination of the two, but I'd like to see it on one page.
Okay. So, the, so like, if I look at this person, so material type and, uh, no, actually, so equipment used, if, let's just say that this is the, I'm just trying to figure out how, where we're gonna bill, so let's just say that, that Kim is driving Ed's truck for the sake of conversation, and this, this is Kim's time sheet, okay? So equipment used, she's gonna be putting down her five hours of labor, and then Ed's gonna do another one, and under that same equipment used, he's gonna put the five hours under equipment, right? Cause he, she's the laborer, okay.
But this is, this is letting us know who used that piece of equipment, 'cause also on the time sheets currently, they tell us which equipment they used. Um.
So the, the last two, I'm sorry, I think that Kim shared her germs with me this last week. I'm sorry, I keep coughing. The material type and amount used and supplies purchased, there's never gonna be any times over there, that's just a, for record-keeping for the, right?
Yep, so, um, that would go in the RSMS at, a yard of gravel went on Youngs Ridge.
Um, I mean, I guess the only thing that, the second one that you have there, um, if we're gonna put it in our MS, and we're gonna make, we talked about making copies for the road files in the vault, is just request that the road guys only put, thank you, only put one road per column somehow. I mean, I don't know how else you're gonna separate it, 'cause think about, think about the information that you would've requested.
So, it, right here I have two roads on here, you'd have to make two copies.
Well, I mean, I, I guess in, in five years, how are you gonna be able to tell which, you know what I mean, how, how much time was spent on each road?
Ah.
Right? And that was kinda what you had said about the Flat Ground paperwork we pulled for you.
Right, 'cause this one, um, this person had worked on both, two, two roads that day, but I don't know how much was on which.
Can you send this to me electronically and I'll kinda play it a little bit, and we'll get you a draft for next week?
But you don't have, you don't do the Google spreadsheet?
I can, I have found a way around it.
Okay.
I created a Google account, so I could open your documents.
Yeah, 'cause sometimes they do work on more than one road. They can move around and stuff, so.
I'm just trying to, I'm thinking long-term, the easiest way to get in the system, and if we're gonna be copying in our, our end and putting it in the roads, we wanna make sure that, you know, we have specific information for that road.
And I, I think we would, I would also like to have the road commissioners look at this to make sure we're not forgetting something or, um, and, you know, get their input as well as, um, you know, having a, a staff meeting on it, just to, to make sure they're filling it out right and telling their employees how to fill it out.
I mean, once, yeah, we can get their opinion on it, once you get to a draft that you like, and pull them in, and, uh, certainly I'll discuss it with them tomorrow when I go over this, these other things as well.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Inspection policy.
Sorry. So Code Enforcement spoke to me today and, uh, asked me to check in with the selectman on how you would feel about if a, if the school is closed due to inclement weather, there will be no inspections that day. So, um, you know, it, as you know, that my decision along with the road commissioners, if we decide to close, I do my best to keep the town hall open, um, unless I hear that, you know, unless it's literally going to lizard all day long and all night, I try to get the staff in here when we can, so. But it is making it more difficult for, for them to go out on these side roads and do inspections. So even if town hall is open, they would still come to work, but they're looking for a policy that says.
Oh, okay, just for inspections.
Just for inspections.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
So essentially, they're not out on the roads. If the buses can't be out there, they aren't gonna be out there.
Yeah.
Yep.
So would you be interested in seeing something like that?
Sure.
All right, I'll draft it.
Okay. Okay, public comment. Anybody public anything they'd like to say? We've already heard from Dennis tonight, so I don't anticipate he'll be up, unless you want to, Dennis, of course.
Oh, I had a question. Um, how were the proposals for the engineering on the bridges coming in?
I received one today on my desk.
One, today? Wow.
Well, there we go.
Was, and it was to one that you actually mailed one to?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it was, um, it was to our original company, uh, Calderwood. I didn't even, I haven't even opened it.
Oh, it was? Did, um, do we have a time limit on that?
There is a time limit on it. Uh, I'll check the bid.
Okay.
I could make up a date for TV, but I'd probably be wrong, so. But there was a deadline on it.
Okay. Back to public comment, anybody public? Excuse me, now it's my turn. Okay. Announcements, do we have any?
Well, I thought we'd just let November go out, and we'd put all the December ones on there.
I just, um, no. Well, we are hosting our last Nano-RyMo Thursday night.
Say that again?
Nano-RyMo is abbreviation for National Novel Writing Month. Apparently, um, you know, I'm a host site to have people come in and, and write novels with their fellow writers, to write 50,000 words in 30 days, and I have, I have, um, three, three kids that have come in, um, high school-aged kids, and one adult. So Thursday night's the last night to get your 50,000 words done. Um.
Let's get right on that.
And I just wanted to say, I, I haven't checked Facebook in a while, but I did look, um, this morning, and I just wanna thank people who pulled together to make the tree lighting happen. I guess there was some issues.
I was just gonna say something about that, yeah.
I didn't realize that there was help needed.
Yeah, and it was a last minute, I mean, um, Jenny Gore and Bridgette and Chris Whitman were, they pretty much took the lead on it. And, uh, the day of the event, something happened in both of their personal lives that, um, they were able to get through, you know, in a matter of a few hours, but when you've got an event like that planned, a few hours makes a huge difference. So I did, they contacted me at home, I posted something, and they had, you know, volunteers just showing up left and right, and they didn't have any idea what they were doing or what they wanted, but they all showed up. Um, so, but kudos to Jenny and the Whitmans for doing that. The fire department was a big help.
Looked like it turned out really good.
Terry, Minaham at the church, they did all of the goodies, so.
Yeah, thank you, guys.